will come October first with bark in the park. So as part of that official launch, we're proposing to do a cornhole tournament with a benefit that evening and in and have some food trucks. And we are requesting both the waiver of the fee to use the park and we're requesting permission to do a temporary beer and wine permit so that we can sell beer and wine at the cornhole tournament. And I will answer any questions that you might.
Motion approved, item eight eight, second amendment.
Motion made by Councilman King, stated by Councilman Zamora, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. King. Eight B, consider approval of ordinance amending chapter two point eight eight of the code of ordinances regarding the exception to the Hillcrest Cemetery rules for the graves of victims of the rob school tragedy.
Good evening, Council. My name is Kimberly Rubio. I'm Lexi's mom. Burying my daughter was the hardest thing I have ever done. Her final resting place, Hillcrest Cemetery, is a place of solace. As such, it is important to me that her grave site appropriately represent her. I come to you today to request a standing headstone, which is currently prohibited by the city. You have a copy of more or less what I want, and I urge you to honor my request. It's also been brought to my attention that some community members oppose my request. To that, I say if your child wasn't murdered in her fourth grade classroom, your opposition doesn't count.
Ms. Welch?
My husband and I are the owners of Laguna Monument Company, and I wanted to speak on this. We are certainly not opposed to having upright headstones in Hillcrest Cemetery, but we are opposed to it being just for the victims of rob tragedy. We have had many, many families come and ask to be able to put an upright headstone in Hillcrest Cemetery and have been told numerous times. So I feel like it should be for the entire town of Uvalde, anyone that is buried in Hillcrest should be able to have an upright stone, if this passes, not just the victims of rob, as sad as it is. And they certainly are entitled to one, I feel like. But I'm also, I guess, arguing for the entire town because I don't think it should be just for the victims. Okay? And then also another thing that I am concerned about, if we go to the upright stones, is I guess where are we going to stop with the size and the shapes and everything? What are, what are going to be the guidelines of those stones? Are we going to be able to put custom shapes like the Texas or teddy bears, cars? We've done all of those in the past. So, you know, what is going to be allowed? And how big are you going to allow us to go with that? So we're going to need some guidelines on that and probably pretty quickly after it passes, if it, if it passes. Another one of my concerns is how they will be paid for. I know that the first stones were being paid for through donations from the city and, not from the city, but through the city. And so I've already billed the city for a large amount of that, and I still have some that has not been billed yet. So if it, all these, I've had, I think, probably eight, eight or nine headstones and benches and everything that have been ordered. And so I'm just going to need to know how is this going to be handled? I've never had to cancel headstones before. I don't know that I can. I certainly will try. But our headstone orders go back between eight months and a year because the granite is so slow coming in. So I feel like I can probably cancel some, if not all, of these headstones. But how is it going to work moving forward? Who is going to be responsible for those? You know, paying as far as the family's going to do it or is the city going to continue to do it? I'm going to need some, some guidance on that.
I would think, my understanding, if we're talking about approving one of these headstones, you know, for one of these victims, that the family would be responsible for that.
Responsible for what?
Paying for the headstone.
I think the city's been, the donations is going to be...
Well, donations were made to pay for the headstones to the families. So those that have already got a headstone that was coming or whatever, and I think the, the fund is already looking at that money to see what's there to work with these families, however they need to work with them. There may be some that have to come out of pocket because they've already got their stone ordered or whatever, but I think that's something they'll, they'll be able to work out. I think that should be the least of our worries at this time. I think we can work that out.
Well, I'm certainly willing to, to work with them. I think that's really my biggest concerns is, you know, and also on the, the making of the stones is the, there going to be a requirement for there to be like a concrete slab underneath of it for a foundation to support that bigger headstone. So I definitely think that there needs to be, so I just would like to see some, some guidelines on that.
Sure. I think, I think that with the families and the city staff will get together and come, and come to a conclusion that works, that, that will work for everybody. I think that, I think we're capable and they'll, they'll be able to work together to get that done.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Thank you. I make a motion.
Maybe we still got more people wanting to talk about it. Reese Rosenberg?
Yeah, I wanted to call from C.
Okay. Okay. All right. So, okay, now we can go with Chip.
I want to make a motion to approve item eight B. I think the families need to get together and the city staff because we do need to come up with some guidelines from this day forward. I agree that probably in the newest sections of the cemetery, we probably don't need to just limit. We can say we can put upright headstones, but not in the other side because things are kind of established there already. If you are willing to work with staff and kind of come up with a, I, I did a lot of studying this weekend and, and most cemeteries will say you can have this, this, and this so things don't get out of way. You have sprinkler systems, you have to try to work around those. So if y'all will work with them, I, I want to approve item eight B with the context that you guys need to talk with city staff and come up with some guidelines. Is that okay? Thank you.
Motion made by Councilman King, stated by Councilman Balki, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Eight C, consider establishing a permanent memorial to the victims of the rob school tragedy on the plaza. And before everybody starts, I will say that the city staff and the families have been talking and it seems like they were working together with a plan that will work for everybody. So if somebody's coming up to criticize, you know, it's your right to speak, but these, these families have been working with city staff to do something when the square could still be used by the rest of the community and so forth, so.
I brought this up at the last meeting, and I want to thank the families, Kimberly, and everybody I've talked to over the last weekend. This is what I wanted, and I think we have a committee. No one else is going on that committee unless they want someone else on that committee. This is your committee, and you work with city staff, and I think we can, we can have something really nice that you guys want. That's what it's all about.
Mr. Rose.
Since you already state that, I'm here to make sure, to help them grant that, give them permission to go ahead and, and establish that memorial there at the plaza. So I applaud you all for doing that. So I know we all will support everything, what the family wants, and it's for them, actually, so they can have some peace of mind, not all of it, but some peace of mind. The other thing that I wanted to talk to you about, which is not on the agenda, is transparency and accountability of the law enforcement. I understand that it takes time to get reports, everything. I, I understand that, but since we haven't seen nothing, I haven't, I don't know about the families, we haven't heard nothing anywhere, and I mean anywhere. I know at the very beginning, you were pushing, you even signed letters with Senator Gutierrez, everything. I hope you continue doing that because the state, the way it looks, is they're sealing everything, you know? It's like, I'll let you know when I decide, you know? Well, I understand that it takes time here at, in the city of Uvalde, but still, I hope it's not like what the DPS is doing where they're sealing everything. And who knows? It might be a year, two years, three years, five years, who knows? So hopefully something will come out and yourself or somebody here would say, this is what's going on, even though that you cannot say much, but at least where, where is it? That's what I'm trying to say. Because we need transparency and actually demanding accountability. That's the most important thing. Demand accountability and not let nothing just slip underneath.
And we, we, if I couldn't, the families, and I'll tell you, we have had this, we hired an outside investigator, not one city personnel, not anybody on this council or any wire person will be involved in it. It's his team, and he's been on it about two and a half weeks. So, I mean, he's already, you know, we're, we're not privy to his, we're not getting reports from him or anything, but other than we know he is doing things already, and we won't get that to the distribution, unfortunately. Nobody interferes with it because we want a total outside hands, outside eyes, not us involved in it. Because that way when we get that report, it's not from somebody up here or not somebody in our own department, but it would be an outside, you know, that his cred, his credentials that we have seen and talked to people is pretty impressive.
You know, we just want to make sure that, that it's not the, the good old buddy system, basically what it, that's, that's what we don't, that's what we don't want. And let me tell you, because that's the worst thing, that's the worst thing that can happen.
I, I can promise you, I, I, like I said, I got nothing to lose here. I can't get reelected or anything. I want the truth. I don't want any, I don't want any games played, I don't want anything.
Be a D road.
Look, I've said, I've said since day one, every agency has to be accountable. I've never changed that statement, and I still feel that way. Everybody that was there that day, whether it be school police, city police, state police, FBI, US Marshals, Border Patrol, every agency that day has accountability to not just the citizens of Uvalde, but to everybody in this country of what their actions were.
And I hope, yeah, I hope, I hope continued with Senator Gutierrez to go ahead and send letters to, to the governor because it, it seems like it falls on death ears over there. He ain't doing nothing for Uvalde.
Well, I will tell you that Zavala County, Demet County, and Valverde County have all passed the same resolution that we did, asking for the governor to call a special session and change agents living on guns. We got one tonight from, came to Retch, better from Del Rio, to send the stairs to Valverde County, did the same thing. Their city council doing the same thing. So hopefully enough of us will get together that our voice will get heard.
I hope so, because it's not like everybody knows the next step is to vote. That's what I'm saying. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Speaker. So I'll make a motion. You want to talk on this? Memorial? We're talking about the memorial. Absolutely. Good. Yeah.
Apologize for that, Mr. Mayor. Jesse Rison, on, regarding the memorial. On Wednesday, August seventeenth, most of the families met to begin the discussions on the memorial to honor the loved ones. One of the central points of discussion was the location and what their, what they, the consensus is that they want at the Uvalde Plaza Square. That's what they're, they're asking. They understand that the first step in this special thing that's about to take place, that it's getting approval from the board, from everybody, and we're hoping that, that takes place. We'd also like to, to thank Vince DiPiazza and Susan Anderson. They were there basically to support, to provide us with the guidance. They were very clear that they're, they're not there to provide input, like what's the design, anything like that. It's basically, it's something that we would have to circle back anyhow, so we appreciate the time staying there late and stuff. So at this point, we're asking that hopefully the board will approve and, and grant their, their wishes. Everybody's consensus, most of the families were there. We tried reaching out to the ones that couldn't make any stuff, but it's something that, that, on a personal note, it, it, as painful as things are for the families, it was, and my brother told me this, he says, you haven't really been around them, and he's been with a lot of the families, a lot more than I have, he says, but you're going to see something beautiful. You're going to see how they communicate with each other, you're going to see how they come together, and, and you just sit back and enjoy the beauty of the families. And I was touched by that, and I was honored. So I appreciate, appreciate the opportunity to do that, but apologize again for not putting my name on the list. Do y'all have any questions for me?
So we appreciate, we appreciate y'all on the work of the city, and we consider that plaza, and it should be a place there. We have a petition, we appreciate y'all on, we consider that respect.
Thanks, sir.
And I should say that one of the things that we, we thought that the families might be concerned about is, is that, kind of, whole of one more town, lots of activities mixed plus there. We had parties being forced to start, and we wanted to make sure that they understood that we're okay with that, and, and consensus was there. They want, they want their loved ones memorialized as part of our activity. I think, I think we can find a way to be respectful to them and still, to the, to the community celebration, that's, that's what we should do.
Thank you, Vince.
Thank you. And, Mr. Morgan?
I wanted to say that the Monument Builders Association, which is Texas, Louisiana, I mean, lots and lots of monument builders, they have offered to help the families in any way with a memorial if they need help designing it, setting it up, whatever. So that offer stands if they need.
Absolutely. Thank you.
Good evening. I'm Mindle Morgan. I grew up in Uvalde. It's my hometown, and I'm honored to be back to serve in the library to a place where I felt so much was given to me. I did not realize that a committee had been appointed regarding the memorial at the plaza. So the remarks I had, I think I would like to share better with the committee because I had some specific ideas that I hope might be an option that might be useful. So if I may, I'll reserve that then for another time. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Carew?
Good evening, Council, family members, visitors, media. Viano Alvedo Carew. I was a little confused, and the only reason I, I placed myself on the comment list for this item. First of all, I want to preface my remarks by thanking the Council for working so quickly with the families on this memorial because it's probably one of the first things that's happened within two weeks, unlike many of the other things that we continue to wait on. But I was a little bit confused because when I heard that, when I saw that item on the agenda, because at the last meeting, Councilwoman King had asked for a committee to be established. And so when I saw that item, I was confused about whether was a committee established, and now there's a, an action item to actually create a memorial, a site has been chosen, so it moved really quickly. So I was wanting clarification. You have obviously answered those questions as part of your preface before this discussion and the family's desires.
The families spoke, they established their own committee, and we support them 100%.
And again, that's great. I just needed clarification because it was a little confusing from what was approved last meeting and the item that's up for action tonight. So, but thank you.
They've done wonderful.
Yes, I, I understand that, and I'm really happy, glad that that place will be memorialized on their children's beheaths, and the city of Uvalde can be proud of at least one thing that has been done so far to begin to work towards healing for these families, long overdue. So thank you. And since I'm up here and you allowed Mr. Risa to veer from the subject, I did have a question about the investigation, the internal investigation on the police department. At the county commissioners meeting on Monday, Councilwoman Yeko made a comment that I wish to have you respond to. He indicated that he had spoken to somebody from the city that had told him that even though you're in the midst of an internal investigation and you've assured us, the community, and the families several times that that investigation is going to move quickly, you're going to look at those recommendations seriously and take action on them. His statement was that you would not be doing anything with that report until after the end of the criminal investigation, so that it would be held, no action. And so I would like the Council to respond. Was he correct, incorrect, didn't understand?
Here's how I respond to that. In the moment, we're doing an investigation. If in that investigation, the DA is investigating officers from a criminal standpoint at that point, then that will be excluded. That point will be excluded from our investigation because it will be in her hands at that point. And at that point, she'll come to address that. But we're reviewing every aspect in this review of the police department, from every officer's actions that day that was at that scene, from twenty-five, every officer there, and every policy that we have in place. And we will come out with that, but if there is a criminal investigation that pertains to that at that point, and we will talk to the district attorney, and if she says no, that can't, that part can't come up, well, we will be transparent until we can't release that part.
No, no, no. And my primary question is, aside from a criminal piece that might come from this investigation that the DA is going to have to consider because it's a criminal charge, if you will, those are my words, if they recommend discipline and reprimand and possible termination based on the findings of that investigation, that is an employee issue, will you take action on those recommendations? Okay. And that's what I was looking for. Thank you.
Vince, want to say something? Yeah, I was getting back to the memorial issue, the, 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 the council sort of, I had a couple individuals, Risa, Mr. Rison, and they were the ones that moved on this and, and the families who worked with it and worked, basically, I'm not sure which one of y'all did the organization, the one that we talked to, there was two, all of them followed, but that's, that's also part of the reason why I, I, I wanted to, I want to make sure those two didn't get investigated.
Things usually run a lot smoother when the government is out of it.
Absolutely. Feel like I need to clarify something, though. The, the microphone, our taxpayer money? So, got to throw a little joke once in a while. The, the committee hasn't been formed or anything like, this was a totally informal thing, just kind of, kind of kicked things off at the beginning of the phases, but the committee hasn't been formed, it's just...
It's the committee, it's now the committee.
Right. Yeah, eventually we'll let the families, you know, decide on all that, so.
I think they talked about maybe getting a smaller group, working on more, I don't know.
That's exactly, yes, sir.
We're leaving it, we're leaving that for y'all's direction. If you need our assistance, then we'll be there, but we're leaving that for y'all.
Okay, cool. Thank you.
So, I've been trying to do this for a while. I want to make a motion to approve item eight C. There are some other things that are going on, or other memorials that are going to happen, little things, and you guys are the leaders of that group, so I want to make sure y'all remember that. Get yourself established, become a good committee, and we'll keep moving on that. So motion approved, item eight C.
Second. Motion made by Councilman King, stated by Councilman Zamora, all those in favor? Aye. Motion carries. Eight B, consider nominating Candace to serve on the board directors for the Uvalde County Appraisal District. And... Would I have to nominate, I have to just have to start naming names?
Yes.
Anyone to speak on this, Ms. Carew?
Once again, Viano Alvedo Carew. I wanted to address the Council on this particular agenda item. One is to let you know that I am interested in being considered as an individual to serve on the Uvalde County Appraisal District Board. When I moved back to Uvalde in 2018, I did indicate to the Council, and I don't think all of you were seated in the, it's maybe Mr. Luévano, that I was interested in, in being considered at that time. Unfortunately, I hadn't lived here long enough in order to be a candidate, but I have been here now four years, and I would appreciate the opportunity to be a nominee for, for one of those positions. I, I don't know if the individuals whose terms have expired can serve again. I'm not sure how the policies of they can serve again. Do they continue to serve on and on in perpetuity, or how does that work?
Some of them want to serve, and they want to talk about it.
Okay. And, and I think that's one of the challenges that we have as, as a community, that it's the same people always serving in the same capacity, not giving opportunity for new ideas, new energy, and new individuals to serve on these boards. And I would appreciate if my name would be considered, or others that haven't served in the past, again, so that the community of Uvalde can be represented by all of its population, not just some of it. Thank you very much.
Will you steal your name to surround and we'll make sure you're on the list?
Thank you.
We, we need people to serve on that.
No. I understand, we need people to serve. I'm just saying if you have new individuals willing to serve...
That's why I think, wait a minute, we, we do tend to change it up. We don't have the same people.
Okay. Thank you so much.
Motion to table item eight D, and let's, let's come up with some, some names.
Yeah. Item eight D, consider requesting the Uvalde Police Department to approve the Moody Foundation Grant.
Good evening, mayor, council, city staff, and everyone in attendance. Last month, I submitted an application to the Moody Foundation to be considered for approval for a grant. We were notified last week that we were approved for, for the grant in the amount of thirty-three thousand, four hundred and fifty-six dollars, which is going to purchase training equipment and ballistic shields for each patrol unit. And the reason I brought this up to you is, Council has to formally accept the, the grant award.
You got one person who wants to speak on it? Ms. Praddy? You, you have one person on the team that wants to speak on it? You, you want to speak on eight D? Sure, I'm sorry. Okay. Okay.
Good evening, gentlemen, ladies, gentlemen behind me, families. My name is Michelle Praddy. I live on Old Carrizo, right next to Rob. So I do want to address this Moody Foundation Grant. I, I definitely support funding law enforcement, but with the current officers, I don't think any amount of shields can make them any braver. I did want to ask, I noticed that, well, the last meeting, I submitted some formal complaint letters, and it is not addressed on today's agenda. formal complaint letters, and it is not addressed on today's agenda. Can we get some feedback on that?
Not this, but we did receive the complaint letters, and they have been, uh, they've been turned over to the investigator, and they will be part of the investigation that's currently going on.
I appreciate that.
The officers were notified, as they were required to do under the law.
Okay, okay, that's outstanding, thank you. Well, just to add to some of the things that I had discussed at the last meeting, um, I just have a, a few questions. If it is discovered that a cop is beating a cuffed citizen and it's caught on tape, typically what happens to that officer?
What did she ask? I didn't understand what she asked.
You didn't hear me, or you didn't understand?
I didn't, I didn't understand what she asked.
I am asking, what is typical in a situation if a cop is caught beating a cuffed suspect or citizen, just in general, what, what is the typical...
If a police officer is caught on video by another officer or whatever, he'll be charged accordingly.
Right.
And, and I think if you go back and look at our past history, when we've had an officer that assaulted a handcuffed suspect, that officer was dismissed.
Thank you. So, probably the same thing if, if they were, um, driving a squad car under the influence and it was discovered, there would be some kind of reprimand?
You're just like Ian Resto, if you're driving under influence, there's consequences.
Okay, so, what happens if, if cops, due to gross negligence and dereliction of duty, prevent life-saving measures from being administered to twenty-one victims for seventy-seven minutes?
I don't, I don't disagree with you, Ms. Praddy, but I, I, we are going to do an investigation.
I understand.
And we have procedures that we're going to follow, and we're going to do, and I promise you, like we told everybody here, every officer, if there's wrongdoing, and it comes out in that investigation, it will be held in the court of justice.
Yes, I, I, I've, I've heard you, Mayor, and, and I appreciate that. I appreciate that finally something has been started, you know, better late than never, I guess, but I'm, I'm getting to a point, so just bear with me. We already know that you can't just fire them, you know, that's, that's what most of us want, is for them just to be gone. We don't want them on our streets, we don't feel like they protect and serve, I mean, that was made apparent. But I, I truly believe that they can be suspended pending the investigation, and, and that's what I have asked for, that's what many of us are asking for, to get them off the streets. And now, there have been comments made that, oh, then you won't have any cops, and our response is, well, we don't need those cops, those that were there, there's still other cops that weren't on site, and maybe they're, maybe they're just as cowardly as they are, I don't know, because they weren't there, they, they didn't, they weren't there, so I, I can't, I can't even guess what their state of mind is, but I know that there's other agencies that will step in to help with the law enforcement in this community. So, I, I just don't, I don't see, because, because the, the other instances that I discussed, most typically, when there, when there's any kind of an incident, whether it's an officer-involved shooting, or one of these that I mentioned, they are usually put on some kind of suspension. It doesn't mean that they're fired, but they're going to be investigated. In the meantime, they can, they can take a little vacation. Well, either way, as long as they're off the streets. This, this, this tragedy, I mean, I, I'm confident, and trigger alert, everyone, um, but I am, I'm confident that the autopsies would prove that many, many could have had a chance, um, but these officers denied them. And so, just bottom line, the, uh, some kind of action, um, just, just to make sure that everything was copacetic, should have, should have occurred the first week of the incident, just put them on desk duty, suspend them, whatever, some kind of action pending any investigation. But that hasn't happened, and that, that's all, that's all we're asking, at lea, at least some kind of compromise. Thank you. And I've been asked to hand you something.
As you read that, I would just like to go unrecord here, um, that has nothing to do with any of the children's families that were lost that day, as you read that, okay? We don't know, we haven't spoken with that lawyer, I just want that stated.
Thank you. Councilor, will you make a motion?
I'm making a motion to approve eight D. Second.
Motion made by Councilman Balki, seconded by Councilman Zamora, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Eight F, consider a request from United Peace Department to proceed with the purchase of Tyler Technologies' Zebra EMV devices and printers?
Mayor and council, this is, uh, I'm, we're seeking approval to proceed with the purchase of these, uh, Zebra EVM devices and printers, uh, they will be, uh, replacing old and broken devices, and, uh, currently we are short on these, so, uh, staff is requesting approval.
I'll make the motion to approve eight F.
Second.
Motion made by, made said by Councilman King, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Eight G, consider resolution to apply for Operation Lone Star Grant?
Mayor and council, again, uh, the second rollout of Operation Lone Star has been announced, and, uh, we're seeking approval for resolution to continue with the application process. Uh, we will be, uh, I have confirmed, uh, that, you know, we currently are operating on a current Operation Lone Star grant, uh, this is a second rollout, and we do have overtime funding for this, so, uh, I have confirmed that we can apply solely for equipment, and that's what we'll be doing.
Motion approved, item eight G. Motion made by Councilman King, said by Councilman Balki, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Eight H, consider approval of ordinance amending chapter ten, point two-eight, point oh-nine-oh of the code ordinances regarding One Way Street on Schwartz Street.
Mayor and council, last city council meeting, uh, Mr. Salasad and Mr. Perez from the Florida Elementary School came down here and, uh, proposed a change in direction of the one-way traffic flow, uh, between the, uh, morning hours, which is the drop-off, and pickup times. Uh, currently, the traffic is, flows from Getty to High Street, uh, so they're proposing a change in direction, which is from High to Getty Street. Uh, we don't see any issues with that, the only thing that we will be doing is, uh, adding a right turn only sign at that intersection of Getty and Schwartz between those designated times zones.
Who's going to pay for the sign? School, the school district?
We, we can, uh, we can ask the school to, to pay for that sign. The other one-way signs, those, uh, they're just being turned the other way around, I believe. There they are already. There they are already. Yes, that's, that's the plan, that's the goal, we just need approval of this, uh...
Motion approved, item eight H, second.
Motion made by Councilman King, said by Councilman Zamora, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Eight I, consider request to temporarily lease city-owned Edwards water to local individual farmer near amount not to exceed five acre, five hundred acre feet of water. We have the water to lease, you can talk on it if we need to, but it's not going to hurt us, and if anything, it'll give us opportunity to make some money on the surplus water that we're not using.
I'd like to say something before you get going, for everybody out here, when I first got on council, this time of the year, we were buying, how much, for the dollar amount, how much were we spending?
We spent at one meeting, a half a million dollars.
Yes, we bought a little bit of water. We would have to buy a half a million dollars worth of water from people in Hondo and around the area, from farmers, because...
Lease it.
At lease, lease it, temporary lease it, because we were in restrictions, and once we get in restrictions, we can't use all of our water that we actually own underneath this, we have to get some more. We would go out and spend this money every single year, and then, within the last five, six, seven years, we've got to the point, I've been on for ten years, last halfway, about five years, we've managed to bring in our own wells that are coming from a different aquifer, we've managed to buy some land where we got enough wells, and now, we're at a point, we're starting to lease some water of our own, which is pretty impressive, when you consider the amount of money we had to spend every single year, and now, we're going to start leasing some, and I think, thank you, Joe, you've been wonderful.
And, and again, this request is from a local area farmer, he's needing some water to kind of finish up his crop because of the drought conditions we've been in, we've got plenty of water, rest assured that the city is covered for the rest of the year, this water is just a temporary lease, uh, not to exceed five hundred acre feet of water, not, I don't think they'll need that much because of the recent rains, but it's something that'll give him the opportunity to finish up his crop, it would give the, generate some, some revenues to the city, and of course, this lease would go through December thirty-first of this year, come January, if we revert back to the same.
Motion approved, item eight, uh, second.
Motion made by Councilman King, said by Councilman Balki and Zamora, all those in favor?
Aye.
Oh, I'm sorry, I will, I will go back and get you speak if you like.
Um, Viana Alvelo Carruth, again, temporarily lease water, so, Councilman King, you're telling us, the community, that even though we've had no rain forever, wells in Concan, Lakey, dry as a bone, Uvalde has enough water that we can lease water to someone, and there will be no...
We would not be doing this if we didn't have the water.
Okay, how, how does that happen when everybody around us is dry? How do we, how, how is it possible for us to have enough water that we can lease water and not jeopardize the, um, the availability of water for this community? How, how does that happen, I guess?
Because we have two, we have two sources of water, we have Uta Water and we have Edwards Water, and over the years, since I've been on council and Tiff's been on council, we've gone out and acquired more Edwards acre, acre, eight...
But how do the aquifers get filled up if there's no rain? Where does the water come from to fill our aquifers?
If you'll go look at the Edwards Aquifer Authority, you'll notice that when San Antonio's goes down two, three, four foot, a lot of times ours doesn't move, doesn't move, and so...
So, the drought hasn't affected our water sources?
But we have...
So, we're lower than we would want to be had there, there has to be less water if there's no rain?
Let me explain something very basic.
Okay, yep.
Uvalde has an aquifer, okay?
Yep.
We've got a, a bowl of water in our face.
Yep.
Well, we own, in the Edwards Aquifer region, we own X amount of acre feet of water, so there's a guy in, where's this guy from?
He's Uvalde.
He's from South, or, he's here. Seven Island area, that's really not coming out of our pool of water, but we own Edwards water, we could lease, we could lease five hundred acre feet to a gentleman in Hondo, and that's going to come out of the Hondo area because he doesn't have the rights to pump his own water, and so we can lease him the rights to pump...
So, even though the area hasn't had rain, it doesn't matter?
He's not going to put a straw in our aquifer and pull out five hundred acre feet.
But even though no one in this area has had rain, rain, so...
I think we probably need to do some studying, it's, it's not something we can explain tonight. This thing is the most complex, the Edwards Aquifer and the way they handle water, the way we have to move water, the way we lease water, the way we own water, is a complex thing that can take ten hours to explain.
I don't need to know how you lease it and how it works, that's, that's not the question, the question is... And the drought has not affected the level of our water?
It doesn't, it's true, you're, a lot of mine is, we use, we use three thousand acre feet of Edwards water, I'm just using this as an example, three, we own six, we only use, we only need three, but, so, citizens are a great part of why we've done so well on water too, because they've been conservative and so forth, but we own six thousand acre feet of water.
Okay.
So, that's our, we own that.
My only concern was, given the fact that we've had no rain, there's drought all around us, people's wells are dry, is this going to affect this community? You're telling me it's not, so I'm going to trust that you're correct?
If we were, if we were going to take this out of Uta Well and do that, then yes, it might, this is coming out of them.
All righty, thank you so much.
They literally don't come take our water, they're, it's not, it's an ownership.
Well, we approve it, so... You what? No, you, there's, there's still restrictions, and we all have to water. I mean, you can water your, if you want to water your yard, you can water your yard, but when you reach a certain deal, if everybody in the city, if you use a certain amount of water, and you go over that, your bill goes up, and you go over the next level, your bill goes up again, it's a three-tier system, so you can use the water by all means, but your bill's going to go up with it. Eight J, consider an agreement with Safer Watch to provide its mobile security application and related services to the city, and I'm going to get Gina. Gina O'Farrell, but, look, I downloaded this app today, and, uh, this deal, on the other deal, and we put it in a lot of people, you know, before you start, I was going to tell you, but this field, this app, to me, will be a great asset to our community because it has an ability to make tips on crimes, different things, and a lot of people want to remain anonymous, they don't want to be exposed, this gives you the opportunity to do that anonymously, you don't have to expose yourself, but I'll let you take it, too.
Okay. Good evening, Mayor, City Council, and families, um, thank you for that opportunity to be here today. I'm, I'm Gina O'Farrell, I'm the CEO of a company called Safer Watch, um, you know, like the rest of the nation was watching what happened, we were, you know, torn apart, we wanted to know what we could do as well, and we're actually essentially donating our, our product to the city of Uvalde for a dollar a year, um, for the next five years, but basically, what Safer Watch is, is it's an application, mobile application you download on your phone, that easily you can report suspicious activity or crime tips directly to local law enforcement, um, and if you don't have the application, you can also text in a tip, we, so we created and purchased a phone number for the city of Uvalde, um, the eight-three-zero-two-six-four tips, that anyone's able to text into that line, we recently met with the mayor, uh, superintendent, and the police chief to coordinate how this program would work, but really, the whole purpose of it is... But really, the whole purpose of it is, our company's based in prevention, and it's based on real-time information. So, people are able to contribute information, um, directly to city officials or to the police department, and the police department is actually able to send out real-time alerts and notify people as to what's happening in the area. So, hopefully, you guys will consider our proposal, and happy to answer any questions actually on the program, if anyone has any questions on the, the application. I know we already met with, um, the city attorneys back and forth, and, uh, I believe they approved the, the contract.
I mean, for a year, whatever we have to reason to give somebody the opportunity to make it, to give us information, to make a tip to the police department, it's not really possible. And it's free for citizens in Ed...
Motion approved, item 8J, second.
Motion made by Councilman King, seconded by Councilman Balki, all those in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Thank you very much.
Thank you, we look forward to partnering with you guys in the community, we appreciate it.
Uh, last item, 8, and let me back up, Adam, I apologize. You were on 5 and not 8 seats, so I apologize.
I wasn't sure where to put myself, because usually you don't have the...
I'm just looking at all the numbers.
Okay. So, I did have a question, and it'd probably be for Vince, or maybe the attorney. By law, do police officers have to engage an active shooter? Uh, like, for instance, uh, active shooter, active shooter comes in here, shooting us, and the police officers are outside, do they have to enter if they don't feel safe?
You're asking if there's a law, or, I mean, I'm not aware of any law that requires them to do that. I mean, that would be part of, that would be part of our policy, yes.
But, what policy is that?
It'd be the active shooter policy.
But by law, do they have to enter if they don't feel safe?
Okay, there's, there's not, as far as I know, there's no law. That's our, that's our internal policies and procedures. Those are the guidelines they go by when, when dealing with various incidents that, that they have to deal with. And nuts, and I'm not really sure how to answer the question. Police officers in the course of their duty, uh, are, are required to do unsafe things from time to time.
But is there any law that requires them to have to engage if they feel unsafe, or anything else?
There's not a law that requires police officers to engage. There's not a broad-based law that, that covers every situation and every scenario, that, that doesn't exist.
So then, how would they be prosecuted if they didn't break the law?
You're asking a question as to a lot of laws, and whether or not they can be prosecuted under very specific ones. There, there's not a broad, like, your question to me is there one specific law? There is not. Whether or not the district attorney and the myriad of laws in the state of Texas find something to charge somebody is not my call, is not anybody on this council's call. And I don't know what she's investigating, so I, I can't give you an answer to your question, because I don't know what she's investigating, or does anybody else on this council? So, I, she has a whole book of laws under the Texas Penal Code that she can investigate under. We are not privy to what that investigation is, but your question specifically, no, there is not one specific law that I can cite to you in this circle of states. Does that answer your question? I'm not trying to be, not trying to go around...
No, I appreciate you. And I've done research, and I'd imagine y'all would have done research, because it's something that we wanna know. But by looking at it, I don't see any particular law that requires for them, if they're unsafe, feel unsafe, they don't have to. And I feel like, maybe they felt unsafe, and they knew about that law, or there was no law, so that might be why they didn't enter. And maybe that's why we're having trouble holding them accountable, because they really didn't break any laws. So I was just trying to clear that up, and I, I did wanna also request that, if there isn't one, would the city be interested in creating some type of ordinance for Uvalde that says if there is an active shooter, whether they feel unsafe or not, protect and serve, right? Is that just the motto that was created?
In, in, in those policies, Adam, I can tell you, in the, in the policy going forward, when we get through, there will be an active shooter protocol, as well as the different scenarios of shooter, whether it's a contained shooter, active shooter, barricaded shooter, whatever. I'm not law enforcement, I don't know all that, but we will have those, and we are having those trainings for those different divisions to come in forward.
Can, can you put there that if they don't, they would be held accountable in some way, even if it's not legally, but, you know, administrative-wise, that they would be held accountable if this happens again? We can be the example, so that the other cops, wherever this happens again, they'll know, like, oh crap, you know, something's gonna happen if I don't go in.
If it's very clear, it's stated out of the policy, how you're supposed to react in certain situations if you don't, and that would be justification for discipline termination.
So they can be terminated if they don't act?
I would think so. Would it, the policy, is that it?
If, if a police officer violates a policy, then, then he determined, and there is evidence of a violation of policy, they can be terminated, yeah.
Can you tell me what policy that would be if they didn't enter?
Well, no, what I thought we were discussing is what policy would come up?
When we go through these deals and these policies are put in place and going forward or whatever, I don't know what's there 100% right now, one way or the other, Adam, to be honest with you.
I can appreciate that.
And, but what I can tell you is, there will be a scenario for an active shooter, and there will be a policy that you have to follow in that active situation. And that will be going to the shoot, going to the situation. At that point, if you don't, then you would be a violation of, of, of policy that our department accepted, wrote, has in place, then you would be in violation of that policy.
And who's gonna create that new policy that you're talking about?
We're gonna be working with TEES, we're gonna be working with Mr. Prado when we get through.
Okay.
We're gonna be working with, uh, agencies and with, at that point, with the police department on the policies in place, we're gonna be working with the chief and putting those policies in place. Like I said, every option for us is on the table for this investigation.
Okay. That's all I got, thank you.
Thank you. Sorry I missed you. 8K, consider extending the declaration of local state of disaster due to public health emergency and local emergency. Hell, we do these so often, I don't know which one we're on. Which one is this?
This is still, this is still public health, this is still the fallout from COVID-19 and all the stuff that goes with it.
Well, I mean, we can pass it, I don't know if there's any, anything anymore with the CDC.
I don't know if there's any, if there's any reason necessarily.
Then let's let it die. No, let's let it go another month. Motion approved, item 8K. If you wanna go another month, I'll second. Motion made by Councilman King. Seconded by Councilman King and Balki, all those in favor?
Aye.
Staying.
Motion to adjourn?
Yep, I have a motion to adjourn.
I guess that's yours.
That was funny, that was a lesson on H2O. Sorry.
Do you wanna stick this in your pocket?
I guess you didn't find that funny.
The lesson was?
On H2O.
Oh, we all ran outside, I didn't hear it.
Oh, you were saying?
Yeah.
It had to do with water.
Really?
Yeah, and they talked about, like, the aquifer and... They talked about the aquifer is the funniest thing.
Oh, yeah, no, we all ran outside, because... He's simple, he's simple, I just stick this in the pocket. Okay, we'll give you this one. You can just stick the whole thing in your pocket, it's easier than the clip. Yeah, we all ran out, because everyone started leaving, so we're like, oh, we'll go chase out.
I like to dig in.
All right, I'll, I'll be the last one, I promise, but hopefully you only have three on you. I think you've got three pockets, right?
Mm-hmm.
There we go. Awesome, and I'll...